Good evening, I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 27th, 2016, back to order. We started this meeting in executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the finance director, town accountant, and the police chief, and now we're back in regular session. As requested, as required by open meeting law, we are informing you that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone who intends to video or audiotape this meeting is required to notify the Chair now. With that, could you please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, anyone for weekly briefing? Carolyn?
Thank you. I just have two quick, if you don't mind. We are getting ready for the annual community center yard sale that we do for all the clubs and organizations in conjunction with the Cranberry Festival. It will be on Saturday, August 6th, at Brooks Park, unless it rains, then we move it inside to the community center. Tables are available for $20. You can sign up at the community center. If you need more information, it's on our website. Posts are all around the community center, or stop in and see us, but you'll see signs like this throughout the building. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that we did a program, our first program, with our Veterans Affairs Officer, we had the first flying in memory, we flew a flag for a veteran at the community center on June 23rd. It was lovely program, they brought the casket flag, and I hope I'm not saying any of the wrong words, so please forgive me if I am. They brought the flag in that was on the casket of the individual who passed away. I believe this was on his birthday, June 23rd. We raised, the family was allowed to raise the flag, we posted some signs up, who we were raising the flag for and memory of on that day. The Veterans Affairs Officer was able to find some information that the family didn't have. It's a free program, it was just something nice, I think the family really appreciated it. And I just wanted to let people know that's something that we're doing, if they're interested, they can let us know, and we'll help them set that up, so, thanks.
And just to comment on that, if you, if anyone recognized the name on that, that happened to be my grandfather. So my father's sister came from Maine for that, and her daughter, husband and child, and I was there. And that is just a coincidence that the first one was my grandfather.
Truly is, I didn't even know Mike was going to be there, that's the honest truth.
But it was a very touching event, my father, I think I've seen him be emotional twice in his life, and that was one of them. It was, his father passed in the war when he was five, and that was, it was a big event, so.
That's nice.
Very much appreciated, and Will Remillard, the veterans agent, actually gave my father, his father's discharge papers, which we had never seen before, that he found on microfiche, so, great service, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments and announcements. Hearing none, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And A, accept the resignation of Robert Sorantis from the Conservation Commission, and as a commission, excuse me, and as a commission's representative to the Trails Committee, effective immediately. B, approve recommendation for committee appointments by interview nomination subcommittee. The appointee, Linda Cibula, the committee planning board, full member, expiration June 30th, 2019. Appointee Mary Maslowsky, committee historical/historic district commission, alternate member, June 30th, 2017, expiration. Appointee Mayor, excuse me, Paul Doan Cemetery Commission, expiration June 30th, 2018?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, excuse me.
I think that on the Mary.
Did I?
She has a plan.
Oh, sorry, plan, okay.
Go ahead.
June 30th, 2017, and the planning board as an alternate, excuse me, June 30th, 2018. Rob Mador Conservation Commission, June 30th, 2019. Larry Brophy Planning Board, full member, June 30th, 2019. C, approve the recommendation of the town administrator to issue dog order following a hearing held on June 8th, 2016. D, approve and sign contract with Mass Department of Fish and Game regarding boating access. E, approve and sign a contract with the Ballard Truck for 2017 Mack Road tractor in the amount of $138,750.
Second.
No, you got it.
Okay.
Can I just make one comment?
Go ahead.
Larry Brophy was moved up from alternate on the planning board to a full member, and I think people should, should know that, but he's been on the planning board for a long time.
Great. One other comment, the interview committee also interviewed Linda Cibula for the housing committee, as well as the charter review committee. There was other people with application on file, they're going to interview them and make a suggestion after they interview the other people. So it's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And any, no public hearings or presentations? Okay, old business. Acknowledge receipt of performance evaluation for finance director/town accountant and approve compensation increase. So this was one of the topics in executive session tonight. The other part of that topic was to, he's been on a four-day work week, and the board did take a vote on the four-day work week in executive session, and the vote was a three to two vote to extend the four-day work week until September 30th of 2016. Can I get a motion on the receipt of the performance evaluation and pay increase? Peter?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we acknowledge receipt of the performance evaluation for the finance director/town accountant and approve the compensation increase as recommended by the town administrator.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the performance evaluation and pay increase, and noted that we voted to extend his four-day work week until September 30th of 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, can we just point out on that extension of the four-day work week, that it is very clear in our discussion, and I think our vote, that it ends at that point, is really on or before, that that would, you know, convert over to the five-day work week, if you will.
Yes. Thank you, Peter. Okay, new business. This also was taken up in executive session. Acknowledge receipt of performance evaluation for chief of police and approve compensation increase. Peter?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we acknowledge receipt of the performance evaluation for the chief of police and approve the compensation increase as recommended by the town administrator.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and accepted to accept the performance evaluation for the chief of police and approve compensation increase. I'd just like to say, you know, it was a very positive, all very positive comments on the chief, and an excellent performance evaluation. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up is a request of the Friends of South Howard's Meeting House to extend the license agreement to June 30th, 2017. So the license agreement that we have, it was a three-year license agreement with the Friends of South Howard's Meeting House, is due to expire. The original agreement with the town was for a three-year renewable term. They're before us asking for a one-year extension, and hope to be back before the end of one year to come up with a more concrete agreement, a use agreement. Judy, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I probably just wanted to comment that on the use agreement, we have many, many very workable ones for historic buildings that are throughout Massachusetts and southeastern Massachusetts, in particular, and some old historic, the Old Rick Church, name one, and we hope to adapt that to, I know the town wanted it relatively close to the community center use agreement, so we were gonna kind of meld those two, and come back with something that really works for the town, and also works for protecting a historic building as well. And when we established that, we were hoping that the town would establish a revolving account, so that when the building is eventually open, we could aim toward, any fees coming in for the use of the building would go directly to the town.
Great. As you get closer, you'll work with us on?
Yeah, well, we're actually doing really, really well now, we're hoping, we've had a wild three weeks, and we're hoping to have insulation and walls within the next three weeks, within the next two to three weeks, actually. We've got a historic painter on site, and it's just going fantastically quick right now, almost more than you can keep up with, but we're doing really, really well, and we're still aiming for late 2016, and we'll be updating you further as we, as we keep going. We figured the year would give us the time to, you know, get that use agreement set up, get the building pretty much ready to open for the public, and also straighten out anything else the board wants us to do with regard to that. And I have a copy of the, our liability insurance that we carry as well, but I think I've already had that copied with the town, so I'll check with Sandy or Ann and see whether or not she needs it again, it's all taken apart, so I think they copied it, I think I took it into them, but I'd have to just refresh my mind on that.
Great, thank you, Judy. Peter?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the license agreement amendment between the Town of Howard's and the Friends of the South Howard's Meeting House to extend the license through June 30th of 2017.
Second.
Great. It's been moved and seconded to approve the request of Friends of South Howard's Meeting House to extend the license agreement to June 30th, 2017. Any discussion?
Just a question, I assume that when I read this, that the user agreement will be signed and finished before the opening? Because it's a little confusing.
I think there's been a lot of confusion, I know with the last board with this user agreement, we are, you know, technically, you know, in charge of getting the building ready and doing the restoration, and developing a program, and then reporting back to the town and going forward from here. The user, the use agreement is really for, not for us, but for a person that would come in and want to have a wedding, or a funeral, or an event, or an educational event, anything that was going on in the building that would be a fee coming into the town. That, the use agreement would be for them to sign, saying they want to use the building, and these are the parameters.
Well, actually, I.
Yeah, I guess I, my understanding is that the license agreement was for the construction phase of the project, and that there was gonna be a use agreement that would be negotiated. I know that we did some negotiations, we didn't come to final conclusion because the work's still in process, but we can certainly look, look and see what the status is of that long-term use agreement. But my understanding, and maybe I have it wrong, because I wasn't actively involved in this, but, was that it would be constructed, and then it would be turned over to the Friends of the, of the Howard's Meeting House to operate.
Yeah, see.
Kind of that operating agreement.
Yeah, it was like a little different than that. Originally, we were on a license agreement, that was a three-year renewable one, and then the last board got into a long complicated thing with like 25-year leases and all, and we really just want a license agreement, basically. And the use agreement would be for people coming in and using the building. For us, we hope to continue under the license agreement, and under our license agreement, if you look at the parameters of the original one that we've always operated on, it indicated that we would restore the building and preserve the building, finish it, get, you got a preservation restriction set up on it, hopefully with the town, and then develop a program for it going forward. So I think the plan would be, you know, at least from our perspective, is, I know the Friends would like to continue to run the building, oversee the building for the town at no cost to the town, and, and make sure that everything runs properly and the building is protected, and, and used very much like the community as well. And then, I, the way I see it honestly, would be that maybe the Friends would oversee what goes on in the building, you know, as a, basically a gift to the town, and then certainly maybe develop programming for it ourselves, maybe for events a year that would raise money that would go back to maintain the building, along with the income from whatever the use of the building falls for with the town.
I don't have any issues with what you're trying to do, I just think we need to have it written down someplace.
Have, have what written down?
You're taking over the building, how you, what you will handle.
Yeah, I think, I think when we go back, we, what we need to do is maybe update, as in my letter, the license agreement, but the license agreement's different than the use or user agreement. That I think is the problem.
Than the license agreement, whatever agreement is, I think we should have, I'm not trying to change anything.
Sure, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just reading through this, it does have in the license agreement that is already operative, that a program description will be submitted by the Friends of the South Howard's Meeting House to the Board of Selectmen for discussion and approval prior to the public opening of the South Howard's Meeting House. Community use policies and financial policies will be established jointly by the Board of Selectmen and the Friends.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to sit down and get, go through all that, at that time when we get closer, I think that would, that makes perfect sense.
So we'll work to, to get something for the board to consider. Great.
I think, I think our expectation, we got ready for town meeting and whatnot, and talked about, you know, additional funds. When we got ready for town meeting, and, you know, got your additional funds, $100,000, the expectation was we're gonna, you know, schedule-wise, we done with the renovations, if you will.
Right.
By the end of the year, sort of thing, and hopefully we'll stay on that track, so my suggestion is, you've been gracious enough to sponsor a couple of tours for us, maybe October timeframe, before the weather gets bad.
Sure, that would be great, yeah.
We come, we go look and see what it is, and.
We're certainly gonna have the vast majority of anything major done, and we'll be working unfinished.
Right, and you'll know much better when you're gonna be done, and when this agreement would need to be in place, so we can make sure that once it's done, people get to use the building.
We actually have it pretty much on schedule right now, and everybody's on, but it's amazing how things get tangled up, and somebody can't come, and then there's a problem, and there's something that they didn't think of, and they had changed. We just have to address a different issue now with the basement, with the, after our building inspection, so we have to either, you know, coat those or treat those differently. Anything holds things up, so in the, in the, in the intent of not having to hold it up further, we're gonna hold on the ceiling in the basement and go ahead with everything else, the walls and ceiling, and our contractors are nice enough to say that they won't charge us more to come back and do that last part, once we iron out that issue.
Thank you, Judy. Any other comments from the board? Okay, it's been moved in, moved and seconded to approve the request of the Friends, from the Friends of South Howard's Meeting House, to extend the license agreement to June 30th, 2017. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up on the list is Coastal Engineering Contract for Wastewater Maintenance Services with Monomoy Regional School District. Chris?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what's being sought here, but I can certainly say what has been done. The town, when they put in, and I don't know how far back this goes, put in a, what do you call it, an active treatment system, and as part of the DEP permit to operate, actually, they call it a BioClear wastewater treatment system, there, there had to be an operation and maintenance agreement to, in order to stay in compliance with our DEP permit. That has been operative and in place since the facility has been built, so we do provide for the board kind of what that material is, in terms of the, the contract. The contract is specifically with, with Monomoy Regional School District, in terms of that, I see that they sent it to us here, but it actually is initiated with Monomoy, and the cost of doing that is about $40,000. So in, in terms of a little bit of details to, in that operation, when the Monomoy School District turned the building, the middle school, over to the town, which occurred, I think in September of 14, there was a, a meeting in which myself and the school superintendent, we had a discussion, and we figured, well, let's kind of maintain some status quo until a decision is made on what to do with the middle school. So there was a, almost a handshake agreement, or handshake agreement, that we would just continue with a 50/50, so we split that $40,000 cost, 20 to the town, and 20 to the, to the schools, to continue the operation of that facility. I think the idea originally was that a decision would be made in terms of what to do with the middle school, and moving forward. Last year, we did put in a request to the folks at Coastal, and asked them, well, what would it take, since the amount of people in both buildings, obviously the elementary school has retained the number of students and staff, but the middle school numbers had reduced, and based upon the actual flow, that system that was put into place was really not needed anymore. We were, I think it was above the threshold of 5,000 gallons per day, which facilitated the need of the, the plant, and now, or maybe it was 10,000 gallons a day. Now that we're below that threshold, we had sought to have that be revised. The trouble is, in when we petitioned them or requested that they look at it, the septic system was significantly smaller, because the packaged treatment did the, did the treatment work on it, and in order to change, we would save money in the long run, but the cost would be to go in, and I can't remember if it was three times the size of the septic field, but basically, we'd have to go take the plant out, and then put in another septic field, and the cost estimate, again, I'm doing this from memory, it was, it was cost prohibitive. I mean, the payback on that would probably be closer, close to probably 10 years, if I had to guess. So I said, well, why don't we just maintain the status quo, in the hope that we get a better sense for what we want to do with the middle school, and as the use goes up in the middle school, if we do additional programs, I think that the 50/50 sharing arrangement could be looked at in terms of what the actual flow is, once we have a, a plan. I know what the board voted, they voted a two-year kind of interim plan, you know, I don't know if two years is worthwhile to, to start doing a more formalized agreement with Monomoy to that end, but I think probably at the end of that two years, we should revisit to see if the flow is gonna stay underneath that 10,000, and if there is gonna be a, a long-term use of that building, then I would definitely recommend that we look at switching from the, the current package plant into a Title V system, because then it's more warranted. But with the uncertainty, there's been, some decisions had to be made, because we still have to pay the bill, and the, so we, we did, I say we, really, Mr. Carpenter and myself came up with this kind of an understanding until such time as a decision was made on the building.
So Chris, I asked that this be put on, just so we could clarify, one of the citizens that was here talking, the last meeting, when we talked about the middle school, pointed out he thought we were paying, we, the town, were paying $40,000 a year, that's not what this contract looks like.
Yeah, the total is 40, we pay 20.
Okay, and how are those payments made? Do we, do we split the bill in half, are we?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And before we get onto the rest of the board with questions, it looks like Coastal Engineering had done fence replacements around that container, a little over a year ago, and left all the debris there. Can you, can you make that call?
Yeah, we can, I'll make a note to have that be picked up.
All the old fencing and all the debris is still around it. And then, have we ever gone out to bid on this, or is this something that we just rely on Coastal to give us the best price that they're gonna give us, and?
Yeah, I don't think we've gone out to bid, certainly in the time I've been here, we have not, that's something that we could look at. I think one thing, just people are gonna ask, well, why are you spending, you know, $40,000? Under the DEP permit, again, that was issued considering that we were gonna be at like 10,000 gallons a day, it calls for daily inspection. So it's not like your homemade, you know, your home septic system where you kind of put it in the ground, and you kind of pump it out once a year, once every other year, and every 10 or 15 years you replace it. This buy permit that was issued when it was originally constructed had a requirement that it be serviced on a daily basis. So that's one of the reasons why I think it's a lot more costly than, than you would see in a, a normal circumstance.
Thank you, Chris. Janelle?
What does that mean, that it's inspected on a daily basis? Somebody from Coastal Engineering actually physically goes over there every single day?
Every single day, yes. And that's by permit?
And then, one more.
Gotcha.
I don't know that it's right that we pay half, when we're not really, the town itself isn't really utilizing that septic system. I don't know if that's something we can renegotiate with Monomoy Regional School District, but it, it doesn't seem right that we pay half, and we're not generating the, the septic.
Peter?
I think part of the complication, think about one of those two schools, the amount of septic in the summertime was like zero, I mean, you know, few people running around the school. Now in the summertime, I, I'm just guessing, the elementary school kind of goes quiet, I'm guessing, and that if we had people, you know, using the gym and that kind of stuff, that maybe we end up on our side with more usage in the summertime than they do, I don't know. I mean, I know one of the problems with schools is, and just in general, is that it's not a 24-hour-a-day operation, and you do have these holidays and vacation breaks and summer, and it makes it very challenging, I think, to come up with what the actual design loads are and that type of thing, because it's very uneven, if you will.
Angela?
I think if we were deciding not to use the middle school, we could back out of it, but we don't know what we're gonna be doing with it. The only thing we've learned from this $20,000 is Chris needs to put that in the pile of costs for running the building. It's either that or whole new septic system. So it's just, it's another cost, that's all it is, so it's not 150, it's 170, if that's the right number.
Great, thank you, Angela, that, that was, and I remember from being on the middle school repurpose, that was in the original cost, so that was in the 125,000, and actually, I believe it was in there at, at a bit more than the 25,000 that we're seeing now. Julie, did you have any?
Well, I mean, the contract is an O and M, so it's obviously gonna be more expensive, because it's not your typical septic system.
Correct.
But ultimately, I wonder, because these are mandated by permits, if we could go back and revisit that, to see if we've got less usage overall, if, if there's any way to amend the permit.
Well, that's what we asked them to do, and that's where that, you know, 100-plus-thousand-dollar cost came up. You still have to have a system.
Right, and just, in terms of testing, though, I mean, I, I don't know that you can lessen the amount of testing on, that's probably what they're saying.
That's what they, that's what they pursued, we did ask them to pursue that for that very reason.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that? Okay, moving along, town planner job description.
So Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to kind of go through, I, I know the board had asked for some specific information, I think in May I had brought info in, asking for a layout for what I would propose to reorg, and we, I had solicited input and received input from the, the planning board, or the planning board chair, and the planner. I've had an opportunity to kind of think about it a little bit more, and I think the two key components that I've changed, one is I was thinking about doing a assistant, an assistant town planner job description, and I've decided not to do that, I think I would just rather keep it as a town planner position. Part of that is, the town planner position is in the charter, so we would potentially have to make a charter change to, to change to the assistant. And quite honestly, too, I think it's just harder to recruit an assistant town planner than it would be a town planner. So I, I think that's kind of the, the thought process on that, where I've, I've changed the, the thought process. In terms of the position description, it was a few things that we had put in there. One, and I think this is just really reflective of what we've done in the, at least in the time I've been here, and I'm sure before, that the town planner does special projects, so we actually included that into the job description. We did lessen the education and experience, we still want somebody that has a, a solid planning background, but I think we went from five years down to three years, and we did expand that out a little bit as well, instead of just local government, we also included regional government. The Cape Cod Commission, as an example, has several planners that are probably pretty knowledgeable, that have some experience that may be transferable to the town side. And then also, the ability to read and interpret engineering and survey plans, I don't know how you can be a planner without being able to interpret plans, so that was one that I, I think just needed to be put in there, because we didn't have that language in. So those were the, the three main components, I think there was a few other fairly minor things. We, we did draft that up, that's in the package, I do have a cover memo to go to the Managers' Union. I wanted to make sure that the board was okay with the concept, and we will discuss the impact with the, the Managers' Union, to see this position is in the Managers' Union. The other component that I had in there was, I had thought about maybe creating a part-time position in administration to kind of offset some of the workload, after discussion with staff, we've come to the conclusion that the two administrative secretaries, I think, do an outstanding job, and if we were to kind of allocate some additional hours, I have 100 hours annually, that would be about $2,500 in terms of cost, that we would be able to probably meet the need of having the assistant take on a little bit of additional responsibilities upstairs. I think it's key, too, that in the job description, which I included for the assistant town administrator, it had specifically in there that it would be responsible for administration of the community development and community services department, so when that job got bumped up, it was bumped up for that reason, and when I say bumped up, in terms of reevaluated and the salary adjusted, it was to reflect the new scope of services that that position would hold. And, you know, to folks that I guess that say, well, why didn't you do it immediately? I wanted to make sure that we had a successful transition in, and I was gonna have the community development be under the assistant, and then probably six months later, we'll do the community services department. And once again, that doesn't. And once again, that doesn't negate my responsibilities as the administrator to, to administer the twenty-two departments. But what this does is it gives the opportunity for those departments that will fall under the assistant to have more direct day-to-day contact with that position and allow me to focus on other departments. And then when needed, uh, certainly provide oversight to the entire twenty-two. But I think that that arrangement makes a lot of sense and, and should work. And that was part of the assistant's, uh, job description that was built in. We did also include a, uh, some salary survey, uh, information. Uh, we did also take into account the elements of, uh, what the, uh, the, um, health insurance contributions are. One of the things that, that I, we found in some of our investigation on some of the positions in town that the base salary, uh, may be a little bit low, uh, in terms of some of its direct comparison. But the town has a very healthy, very positive, although you have to wait till after you achieve maximum longevity benefit. And we do tend to be on the higher end of the scale on the, uh, health insurance piece. So, where these numbers, I think we're in the ballpark for the, uh, the town planner. We certainly, I, I don't think we're in the ballpark as much on the high end, but where we're trying to recruit somebody with a little less experience and trying to realize some potential, uh, dollar savings that we'd like to commence the recruitment and try to target somebody coming in at the, in the high sixties or low seventies, which the town would then be able to realize, uh, some cost savings if we're able to accomplish that.
Thank you, Chris. Julie, any questions?
Um, I just, I, I think based on, I'm looking at the tentative schedule and I'm just wondering, um, if that does pose any kind of delays in anything that's maybe already currently submitted to the bo- to the planning department or, I don't know. When we say that Charlene will be available Tuesday afternoons, one to four, and Thursday mornings, eight-thirty to twelve. I don't know what's on their, their workload, but I'm just wondering if that's any kind of...
Well, we do have a, um, a staff person that's kind of assigned i- in that department that does a lot of the day-to-day. So, the areas where we would see, I think, uh, the initial kind of crunch, if you would, is on the, the special projects and things of that nature. Certainly, and, and I think if, if you're going in this direction, if we receive a lot of permits that require site plan uh, or, or subdivision, then that's going to change the workload. And we would just accommodate and, and have to, to kind of live up with that. Uh, if the, the volume of planning activity stays fairly low, uh, we should be able to sustain. The idea, though, is if the board is comfortable with this, I'd like to start advertising tomorrow. So, I, I want to move as quickly as we can because the, the planner is done on July eighth. So, the idea would be to, uh, recruit as quickly and efficiently as possible to, to get somebody on board.
Angelo, anything?
Oh, I think this is a, uh, a, a good direction to go in. I, I was concerned when you were looking at, just for the assistant town planner, that, uh, are you doing that because our town adminis- assistant town administrator happens to be a planner? And I don't think we're going to have one that's a planner every time. They may, she may go from someplace else. So, I, I think this is a, a good step.
Thank you. Peter?
I think it's the right direction. Um, you know, you never know who's going to answer the call and say, okay, I want to be your planner. Uh, you can only deal with the folks that show up, if you will, or the applicants that show up. Let's hope we get a good one or a couple of good ones we have to choose from. But I think this is the right direction.
Janelle?
Um, I'm just curious why we added the language, um, perform special projects as directed by the town administrator and/or the director of community. I think it's just supposed to say development, community and development, it says. We don't have a director of community development, do we?
No, uh, what the, what the board did do though, when we did the reorganization upstairs, we did create a specific department called the Community Development Department. So, I think we put that language in more as a reflection of that, so they see themselves in a grouping. But this would not, the, the position, we're not going to create a position of Community Development Director and fill that position as a, uh, higher staff level position. But the assistant town administrator will be viewed as the Community Development Director.
Okay, so, can we get rid of that director of community development?
We can, we can get rid of that. I, I don't, I think that that's fine.
I know it's minor, but it's confusing.
So, yeah, I, I am confused by that. So, it, if we don't have a Community Development Department, right?
Well, we do.
But I mean, technically, if she, if the, if we're saying acting as, but not, but doesn't have that title. Am I mis- I, maybe I'm misunderstanding that.
From what I understand, you have a person called the town administrator who has a set of roles to, to fulfill.
Correct.
And one of those roles is being in charge, if you will, of the development group.
Correct.
So, indeed, she's there. She has two titles. It's kind of like the finance director being the town accountant and the finance director.
But I think we were looking for clarification on that. So, that, that kind of goes back to this. If we're having conflicting titles, it's confusing.
They're not conflicting, they're just two titles. They're two titles.
Michael, can you hear? Julie, the assistant town administrator position description in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, it says, coordinates the daily operations of the town, oversees and evaluates performance for the Community Development and Community Services Department heads, which currently are inclusive of the following departments, and it lists the departments. So, the intent, I think, from that is that the assistant town administrator performs that role.
Then we should say that assistant town administrator.
What?
And it shouldn't, I, I, in my opinion, this is a town planner.
Yeah.
It's special, as directed by the town administrator and/or the director of community development, which we don't...
To be the assistant town administrator, I guess is the question.
Yeah, actually, I'll change that. I, I, that makes more sense. Perform a special project as directed by the, uh, town administrator and/or assistant town administrator.
Right.
That's fine. Thank you.
Chris, I have a question. The hundred hours of savings, um, that, that you, that you say you're going to get, is that, that's from going to a lower-priced, for lack of better words, uh, planning?
Yes.
Planner?
So, the idea would be if, if we have the salary now of eighty thousand dollars and we're able to recruit somebody at, let's just say, seventy-five thousand, we would have five thousand dollar savings to do the additional hundred hours to kind of cover having Sh- uh, Charlene cover upstairs. That hundred hours would be about twenty-five hundred, so we'd be able to fund it out of that.
And that hundred hours is basically until we fill that position?
No, it's anticipated for the, for the year, a- as we move forward, that if she, if she's upstairs, acting, you know, more managing on a day-to-day basis, I ask staff, you know, what do you want to do? And they think they can cover the, any additional workload that may come out of it.
Okay. Um, second, second question was, we, we did, um, have this conversation before and you said you spoke to the S I, uh, S E I U management verbally.
Informally, absolutely.
And what you're really looking for us today is kind of a consensus, not a vote, that, um, that we, that we approve. Because we did agree that we weren't going to, um, vote on things that weren't approved by unions going forward.
Yes. What I tried to do in this is to say that the board approves the, the concept so we can move forward. I need to be able to advertise for a town planner. And then the job description itself, if the union has any specific issues that they want to have addressed, I may come back and, and make revisions to the job description.
I understand the sensitivity of time, but, um, you know, in, in, in our discussion, you know, we, we were really quite clear that we did not want to, um, you know, make a position before it was, before it was voted by the union. I know we're, right now, we're talking about a different union, but, um...
Right.
I think in general, I don't mind giving a consensus, uh, you know, myself, or, or coming to a consensus. But I think going out and advertising with a job description for a to- town planner is kind of putting the cart before the horse again. That's one thought, you know. Going to planning and thinking about planning, you, you'd certainly change your direction from what you were thinking originally. I, I'm thinking of the, um, the comments from the Chronicle, uh, this weekend, um, in their announcement this weekend that they met with David Spitz. And he said that it was, the job was equally as frustrating as it was rewarding. I also think about Alan Atkins', um, resignation from the planning board where he, um, commented basically on not having support of the Board of Selectmen, uh, and, and administration. I, I think, um, Joan Cozart was another one that was a, was a bit frustrated that they are spending a lot of time on projects and these projects come before the board and then they're, and then they're tabled at the, on the board level. Any, any thought to, or from this board on, on picking a direction that we want to go in? Before we, before we can, I mean, is the planner, you mentioned special projects. We also mentioned special projects in the assistant town administrator's job description. And certainly, I think that, that we all agree that we need a planner, but are we, are we supporting our planning department enough based on these comments that are being made? And have we given them enough direction? Comments? Peter?
You know, let's go back to, um, you know, Route one twenty-four reconstruction and whatnot. So, the feedback there was Selectmen started down a path, you know, we didn't, uh, engage the neighborhood and didn't engage enough, you know, folks along Route, if you will, to get enough feedback before we got to a point. And then we got to a point and it was, you know, fortunately, the, the neighbors came about and, um, they organized and they said, well, okay, we don't want to do that. I think, much like the planning board's efforts in East Harwich, for instance, um, I think it's, you know, it's very well-known that there's a couple of different groups out there that had different ideas about planning and whatnot. I think in those cases, it'd be who's us, the, the planning department or, you know, the planning board and planner come in here and talk to us. And if they think they need some guidance as to what direction to go into before they go into the direction, are headed down a certain path. Um, then we, we have a good discussion about that. We end up, you know, hopefully voting or endorsing a concept and then we don't back off from that concept unless there's some good reason to do that, so. Um, you know, I can sense planning board members, you know, they put a lot of effort at one point in time into East Harwich and it didn't go anywhere, quite frankly. And if I was on the planning board, I'd be a little frustrated, too, you know. But I think there were circumstances that said, okay, you know, new things happened or a new feedback, you know, people got, you know, more interested. Uh, facts came out and it ended up going outplace, so.
Julie?
Um, I, I guess, you know, Chris, I don't even know if you can answer this, it's just a question. But i- if we have somebody acting and then, let's just say, it takes us a while on, on the hunt for a new planner. I mean, overall, what, what do you, do you see sort of a timeframe in, in doing this? In the sense that are we going to end up with a planning department that sort of has a half, you know, assistant planner with support for an extended period of time? Or, it, I guess that's what I'm grappling with, trying to get a feel for. How, how long would we be in this situation? Do you, do you foresee? And I know that that, you may not have a definitive.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know if I necessarily follow. Uh, the way I look at it is we'll have a interim period of time. The only way you survive in an interim period of time, you can't have one person do two persons' jobs. So, that's just not, not a reality. So, I think that what I would envision and what Charlene had, had put into the, the memo is that she would kind of do the regulatory process. So, if you want to break the planner's job into three basic components, you're talking about regulatory as things get submitted. So, that's driven by the marketplace. You're talking about, uh, doing strategic planning, which they have not been doing actively very much. And then you're talking about special projects. So, the special projects and the strategic planning would be backburnered. You, you, again, you cannot accomplish the same work with two people when you only have one doing it.
No, I understand.
So, in the interim period, I think that's what we would do. The interim period, my hope would be that if we do a recruitment, we have posting requirements for internal candidates. We have external. We could conceivably have somebody on board, probably the quickest sixty days, probably more realistic, somewhere between sixty to ninety days. That's why I'm kind of asking for the board to let me get going. Certainly, I can sit down with the union and go through. I mean, I don't think there's anything that's a showstopper, you know. The job description very minorly tweaked, uh, otherwise I would not, uh, pursue this. In terms of, you know, the larger question about, you know, how does the planning board work and how's the planning department? You know, I don't think I've ever had a conversation with David Spitz where he says, you know, you need to ease up on me on these projects because I have to do work on the regulatory side. That just doesn't happen. And, and I think Peter's absolutely right, that I would be frustrated as heck to sit through an East Harwich rezoning and to go nowhere. I mean, that, that's a tremendously frustrating experience. So, I think it's more based upon kind of not being able to accomplish things than it is based upon the job description and how the job is, is set up. That would be my, my sense.
Angelo?
I think also there's been some, uh, issues with regulatory pieces such as Cumberland Farms, which we've been involved in two years, I guess, of court cases, which, uh, has gone in the favor of Cumberland Farms, basically. So, I can understand where they'd be frustrated there. And this board had nothing to do with, with that.
Janelle?
Um, just going over the job description, one more thing I have a question about is, um, in the very beginning, essential duties and responsibilities. The first non-italicized paragraph, sentence, um, speaks as, uh, providing assistance to town boards such as real estate and open space and Harwich Center Initiative. As far as I know, the Harwich Center Initiative ended years ago. I don't know that that is something that should be, um, included in this. Again, minor thing, but just going over it with a fine-toothed comb.
Yeah, my sense on that is, you know, it may be, uh, something that's, you know, no longer, or, or no longer viewed as important. But your own capital plan, when I looked at, Harwich Center could use improvements. There's no doubt in my mind about that. And, and the basis of some of those improvements, I actually came out of that, that original plan. So, I do have as part of the administration, my, I guess, the town administrator's capital plan to, to look at that. I don't think that should be taken off the, the plan, uh, but we need to do something in, in Harwich Center. And to use that, will we call it the Harwich Center Initiative again? I don't know. Why change the name if, if, I think something needs to be done, though, in the next two to three years to seriously consider how can we do improvements to revitalize the downtown here, or the, the Harwich Center.
But since we don't have it right now, maybe we could replace it with West Harwich, since we are working with DOT for West Harwich.
Wouldn't those things really fall into special category, or special projects?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I view those as falling into special projects, too. I think those are just examples more than anything.
Peter?
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, I think what we're trying to get to here is, um, one of the things we're trying to get to is, do we, do we hold off on this until town administrator has a chance to sit down with the appropriate union and make sure that, you know, our induction order, if you will, on this? And then launch out and advertise, et cetera, et cetera. Or, launch out and advertise at the same time you're trying to go, you know, get the unions concurrents, if you will. And I see that as, I, I would hope it would be at our next meeting, for instance, which should be in two weeks. And so, I think our decision is, do we, do we, um, direct the town administrator to say, hey, go get the union concurrents in the next two weeks and come back to us with the whole package and vote and advertise? So, I see it as no more than a two-week delay myself. Um, I think that could be healthy, quite frankly.
Yeah, my sen- my sense is, is exactly that. Go, go speak to the union first. I think we could give Chris a consensus that we're okay with the job description with a couple minor changes. And, and exactly that. Go meet with the union with our consensus, have them vote it. Come back to us with the whole package and we'll vote. I think, I, you know, I feel fortunate that we have assistant town administrator that has a planning background and, and Chris has a plan in place, you know, including the extra hours to, uh, compensate the administrative staff for doing ex- extra work. So, I, I, I feel like we can get through this with, with a, with a slight delay.
Just a question. Um, we seem to be in favor of the boards here and whatnot. Is it, is it possible to say to Chris, uh, go ahead, talk with the unions? And if luck has it, they say, fine, and they vote on it in the week, then to continue, well, then we pick up a week? Because, you know, uh, if, if they say, no, we want to change that or that, then no, you have to come back, but...
Yeah, I think, I think basically at that point, we'll be doing the same thing we have been doing. We'll be voting a position before it's agreed upon by the union. So, you know, I think for the extra week, it makes more sense to do this right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't agree with you because what we've done, what we're doing now is giving Chris the authorization to talk to this position with the union. And if the union approves it, well, then we're all set. If he, if it doesn't, if they don't approve it, which is a possibility, then the changes have to be made and we have to see it again. If he, if it doesn't, if they don't approve it, which is a possibility, then the changes have to be made and we have to see it again. It's not, it's not that we, we voted to go forward. If we voted for Chris to, uh, post it and start interviewing, I think that would be incorrect, but we're not doing that. We're voting for him to go to the union. And the only change I'm suggesting is if the union happens to agree, because we've agreed tonight that that's what we want to do, there's no sense in waiting for the extra week. Now, is, is there a possibility of that being the case? Yes, is it probable? Probably not. But, you know, a week is a week.
Peter?
So one approach to consider is approving this subject too.
Yes.
Chris having successful discussions with, um, we can name the union, um, before he proceeds to do anything else with it.
Yeah.
Quite frankly.
That's right. Because we're, and technically, we're approving this. We're approving this for Chris to present to the union.
Yeah, we're, we're voting on it though. And how does that differ from the last scenario where we ended up in, um, three, four, five, six months worth of back and forth?
Well, I think what, the difference was that instead of just going to talk to the union and, and get an agreement from the union, uh, before we went out and we had things posted and interviews held, et cetera. Isn't that not correct? See, so the, the next steps were already taken, that's all.
Do we, do we really think that the one, one week extra for the, for the July eleventh meeting makes a difference? And vote it all at once correctly?
You're using some lovely words. We're voting it correctly here also. And we're, and a week can make, make a lot. I don't know how many people are going to show up with site plans or, uh, whatever in a couple of weeks from now. You know, and, and just put a strain on the planning board. Or maybe nobody shows up. I don't know how to forecast that. But I would think whatever help we can provide and, and whatever time we can shorten without creating a problem, we should take, that's all. And if you don't want to do it, that's fine.
Chris, based on this conversation, any, any?
Well, I, I understand the board's, um, you know, concern. I, I do think, I, I get the sense from Angelo's comment that, you know, if the union doesn't have any issue and we schedule a meeting and they say, yeah, go ahead, we're comfortable with it, then, you know, why not just go ahead? If, if the, you know, and I'm content to wait until after that discussion and make sure that they are content before we advertise. And if they say, well, I want to, you know, we need to tweak this or tweak that, then we'll have a discussion. I won't advertise and bring it back to the board. So I, I think we're kind of, I, I think we're pretty similar positions, but.
Well, my sense is that we, uh, you know, Chris has a good plan in place. And, um, we have a assistant town administrator that is a, that has a planning background. And I don't think a week's going to make that much of a difference. And I think, um, my, my sense is that it comes back to us at our July eleventh meeting, complete, signed by the union, for us to sign and vote. I'd entertain a motion if somebody else wants to make a motion.
Trying to understand the motion. You, you looking for a motion that says wait two weeks?
If we, if we wait, we don't have to make a motion.
Huh?
If we wait, we don't have to make a motion.
That's what, okay, that's what I thought. I mean, excuse me, it is the consensus, I think, of this board that in, in essence, we agree with the plan. And that the, I think the only detail here, quite frankly, except for a little bit of tweaking, is that do we actually vote it tonight? Or do we wait until we have discussions?
Job description itself, correct?
Yeah, we, we have discussions with the union, get concurrents that we're okay, and then bring it back for the July, whatever, meeting, which is two weeks from now, which would be my preference, which doesn't need a vote. So I'm not going to make a motion.
Anyone else want to make a motion?
I think I understand the board and just so when I negotiate with the union, which I do have a union member here, so she's aware of what's going on. But the, the consensus is the board likes the plan and, and generally, but wants to just make sure that there's no, uh, issues with the job description.
Correct. Okay. Next, uh, order of business would be the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have, uh, several items tonight, just to, uh, I will try to go through those. Uh, the first, I, I did put in the packet that the, uh, the county administrator, the new county administrator had put in a request to Coleman and Page to help with drafting a new administrative services agreement. That would really between, between the, uh, the county and Cape Lake Compact, as well as with the state. They are looking at redoing some of the state buildings. And there's no direct impact, but anytime, uh, the attorney thinks that there's something that should be disclosed to, obviously, the town attorney has a relationship with us and now he's saying he's going to have a relationship with Barnstable County, he doesn't see any, um, relation that is going to create an issue, but he does at least want to disclose that to us. So that information was, was put in the package. I don't know if anyone has any concerns in terms of that, but I told him I would at least present it. He's, he's doing a very unique function for the county in terms of how they deal with their clients that they lease property to. No, thank you, okay. Then the, um, other items that I have, I'm just going to kind of work down these, is on the, uh, the seasonal hourly wage schedule. Uh, we've been going through at the end of the fiscal year and just prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year, we always get a bunch of what they call personal action forms with a whole bunch of changes. Uh, we did find that in one of the schedules on the seasonal hourly wage, that one of them did not get adjusted, uh, the way that I thought it should. Uh, so we, we will be bringing that potentially back to the board. It's just the one classification for, uh, seasonal people, I think in the harbors and in the recreation. So we budgeted a certain amount and the schedule is a little bit, well, is, is low, just in one category. So it was something that I, we, I just found out about this today, so something that may have been missed. But we will bring that back and, and present to the board if that is necessary. Also, um, I just kind of put these in the order that I, I kind of reviewed these today. Uh, Ed Marigan is a, probably a name that's not necessarily familiar to the board, but he was a director or is a director of the Barnstable District, Barnstable, Director of the Barnstable District Veteran Services Association. Uh, he's a guy, we've had some contact with him in my time here. He's, he's been actually a, a great person to deal with. He's, uh, Will's boss, for lack of a better term. Uh, he announced that he'd be retiring December first of this year. So there will be some transition, uh, in that position. I just wanted to say, you know, to him, thank you for your, uh, for your service to the, to the veterans. It's an important group. Uh, we did also receive a, a letter that he had flagged, uh, that I think the board may want to, uh, have a discussion in regards to. It was from Ann Stewart, who had talked about some of the issues that were raised on the, uh, the schoolhouse in West Harwich, the contamination. You know, that is an issue that was kind of opened and then not potentially closed. So it's something that she's raised, uh, concern about, that I at least wanted to highlight that to the board, that that's something that you may want to, to look at. Also, um, on the Chatham IMA, I, I had a, I was at a meeting called One Cape Summit. I, I didn't go to the Thursday day session, but I went to the Thursday evening session. I know several members of the, the board were there. I did have somebody come up to me though and they said, oh, well, you know, you're not doing any negotiations with Chatham and discussions have broken off. And I'm like, what are you talking about? And, uh, apparently, uh, there was a, a rumor out on the street that the negotiations had broken off. I don't know where that comes from. You know, I, I did speak with, uh, Bob Dunkinson, the, uh, Natural Resources Director and Health Director in Chatham. He and I have, uh, I think, a very constructive, positive working relationship. Uh, so, you know, we're not, uh, no issue on a staff level. And I think the selectmen, we've scheduled a meeting for, uh, July seventh. So sometimes, you know, I, I think it's unfortunate that rumors sometimes take hold. Uh, but just wanted to at least publicly say that there, you know, we're, we're in negotiations and we'll see where those negotiations go. Certainly, the, they presented a proposal and it will have a, a counterproposal to that. And we'll see where we move from, uh, from July seventh on. On the Shore Road, uh, I was hoping to have some material on the, uh, the Shore Road or Little Beach issue that had come up. Uh, we did receive a letter that had some additional legal elements to it. And I thought I would be more prudent to, uh, hold off and let, uh, Coleman and Page kind of look at that to make sure that we don't have any additional issues. But, um, so I have not yet heard back from, uh, Coleman and Page, but we'll try to have that on for the July eleventh meeting to provide an update. I do think it is, uh, very unfortunate. I've been doing this business for a long time and the fact that somebody, uh, took that situation into their own hands and had some vandalism of the, the fencing, uh, is just really reprehensible, uh, that someone would come in. And, um, you know, there, there's a process. I, I always think that this is a great, a, a great government to be in because, you know, you're supposed to vet your concerns and, and have your, your day to be heard. And someone took it upon themselves to try to decide an issue. Uh, so per our agreement that the, that the board has with the, uh, with that property owner, we may have to go in and, and do the repairs ourselves and spend town money to, to fix things. But, you know, vandalism is never a, a solution to, uh, to an issue.
I agree. Chris, on that, when you get that legal opinion from, uh, I imagine you're getting that from John Giorgio, can you send that to us right away so the board can study it before that meeting?
Uh, also, um, I did get a certificate in the mail today that I have fourteen credits towards my twenty-five credits needed for my recertification for a Massachusetts Certified Public Procurement Official. So I am working towards that. I probably won't get the, uh, all the, uh, credits needed because they just don't offer classes in the summer until the, uh, early fall. But I'm well on the way to, uh, to getting that. That will be a three-year certification. Also, I, I thought a, a positive, I got a, a letter in the mail as well that, uh, from the Massachusetts Association of Assessing Officers, provided a scholarship to Donna Molino to take up to five hundred dollars worth of some, uh, courses that she needs to get her certifications at the higher level. So I thought that was nice that she's been, uh, recognized by that association and, and not only recognized, but some assistance given to her to, to make sure that she improves. Also, I, I did receive an email, uh, from a resident in regards to streetlights at Brook Park. Uh, in that one, there is a, now, sometimes this is one of those categories that don't shoot the messenger. So I, I think it does make some sense, but there is a specific board policy, uh, that prohibits, and I'm really paraphrasing here, but prohibits any additional streetlights being installed. So the board has had a moratorium on streetlights, I think a longstanding moratorium. I want to say almost twenty years plus, if I remember the last time we, we looked at this. So that, that is something that, that the board probably wants to take into consideration. I do think the, the request did make some sense. I would also say that, uh, she's talking about Brooks Park and we are doing some renovations under the CPC project. Uh, they have, I don't know, I think it's phase two, said the phase two or phase three. There's quite a few phases on, uh, Brooks Park. And, uh, so there is potentially, maybe under something like that, we could do some improvements to, uh, to make that area more, uh, more friendly to, to folks in the evening hours. And then lastly, I, I had referenced earlier, uh, the Cape Cod Commission doing the One Cape Summit, uh, this past. And I, I do have it the, at the back of the room and just wanted to, uh, let people know. They, they had a, a black box area set up. And basically what that black box was, was to have people go in and you could punch in your home address and see what watershed you're in, see what the plan calls for. And I was there with, um, trying to remember who I went in there with now. Oh, Peter Dubacca. He and I went in and, uh, picked a few properties to see what you could see. I thought the tool, and it's on the website, I know other folks that attended that conference as well. But I, I thought it'd be worthwhile to, uh, I know that the previous chair had his wastewater minute, so I guess this is a, a mini version of that. But if you go on to capecodcommission.org and then, uh, backslash blackbox, it will give you access to that, that portion of their website. And it, it just, I think, helps to, uh, to give people a, a good sense for the issue that, you know, nitrogen and phosphorus are real issues in the community that aren't going to get better unless proactive actions are, are taken. So, um, just thought that people want to see the impact to individual residences, that's a tool that you can use to, to assess that. I know that was really long-winded, so.
Well, I know, and on that, I know the Conservation Law Foundation had quite a message that night as well.
Yeah, actually, uh, thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one of the things that they had said last year was there was a threat that they would create a MWRA, Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, type of entity on the Cape to, to resolve all the issues. And it would make their life easy to come in and deal with one entity. I wasn't aware until that, till the meeting this past week where, uh, they had indicated that it was them that filed the lawsuit to get Boston Harbor cleaned. And they were probably part of the original or, origins of creating the MWRA in the first place. So I, I think that's interesting. The other part that the regulators said, which I thought was interesting, that people say, well, I don't have to do anything, you know? The issue doesn't affect me. And they came out and the, the regulator basically said, and I think at the prodding of the, the Conservation Law Foundation, that if you're a point source of pollution, so you add nitrogen or you add phosphorus into the environment, they may actually require, like, we have a, a, a license or a permit issued through DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, to pump water and provide water to people. And they tell us, here's the quality of water you have to do, here's the amount you can pump, and here's the monitoring that you have to do. They're talking about conceivably requiring individual homeowners apply for those permits. So you could run into a, a situation where you want to put a, a Title V system in, which again, Title V system does absolutely nothing for nitrogen and phosphorus. It only deals with solids. That they could request, as we talked about earlier, that the technology that we used at the middle school and the elementary school to put in that packaged plant, they could insist upon people having a small packaged plant on individual lots and get rid of the, or get rid of or replace or use in concert with your Title V system. And if people think, well, you know, I can get away with doing a, uh, just a new Title V, well, if the state and the feds determine, no, you have to clean up the environment and you need to spend, you know, pick a number to, to do where you don't add nitrogen and phosphorus, it could be exceptionally expensive. And the solution of going with what the town plan is that has the selectmen as the, the wastewater management authority is going to be, I think, a, a far better solution for, for folks to, to undertake. So I thought that was interesting that that little tidbit came out of that meeting that, you know, they, they are considering doing that. So it's not going to be a, a NIMBY situation where, well, I don't have to worry about it because I'm not affected. If you have a, if you have a septic system and you have to get Title V, you will be impacted.
It's the same discussion they had last year.
You know, his, his comment.
Same thing.
His comment was, I'm barely on board. He said, or we're barely on board. And I thought that that really stood out.
I think that, that's true about what, you know, somebody who's, we, I grew up in the MWRA system and watched what it did to a lot of, a lot of homeowners. And so I think that that's part of our public education for people down here is to understand that we have to collaborate because if we don't, we're going to be told the alternative route and it's going to be far more disastrous. So, you know, you think the bills are bad with that? It's going to be really bad if you have a semi-small MWRA.
I just said last year, that same meeting that the, um, Conservation Law Foundation made their presentation and went through similar things. But I asked the question of the gentleman who was there, uh, I don't recall his name at the moment, but anyhow, I said, I said to him, well, you know, how, how do we know how fast we have to go? And what are the ramifications if we're not going according to what you think is the plan or fast enough? And he said very simply, we'll just sue you. I mean, so the threat of additional lawsuits is there.
Yes.
And we all know how that can tie you up. I mean, these, these things aren't going away. We're going to have to deal with it and hence, you know, our comprehensive wastewater management plan. So we can't drag our feet too long. Uh, we need to be making progress as, as we are and, uh, headed towards, you know, solutions that are reasonable.
Okay. Anything else, Chris?
That concludes my comments.
Thank you. So the next item is a selectman's report. And the first is just boards and Board of Selectmen FY seventeen goals and objectives. I appreciate you all, just got this tonight. So I'm going to put it on the agenda for the July eleventh meeting. If you could, um, go through it, um, add, send me emails, um, not as a group, individually. And I'll tweak whatever I can tweak, uh, if it doesn't need discussion prior to that meeting. And then we'll look at a, a more of a complete draft. Uh, I use the same format as Peter used last year. This is, it's, uh, this is made up of basically all of your comments, um, and suggestions. This is, it's, this is made up of basically all of your comments and suggestions. Some of them are pulled from last year's that I didn't think we got done or that we can still use. Some of them came out of the Operational Review Task Force memo that they had put together. So it's, it's basically everybody's ideas and thoughts. I did the best I could to put them together. Some of them are a bit long, but please email me before. Within a week would be great, so I have time to, to tweak it again. This was a, this was a, now I know what Peter went through last year. It was an interesting, it was an interesting thing trying to get everybody's thoughts into.
That's why we voted for you.
I would just say that brevity, brevity is important where you can. You can't have brevity just because,
Yeah.
you know, I think what any of us learned, these things need to somehow, you need to be able to figure out that you satisfy the goal or objective or not. And, you know, if you didn't, well, how far did you get, sort of thing? And if you're not sort of specific about it, it gets challenging, let's put it that way.
Chris, that would also apply to you, any comments that you, that you come up with.
Yeah, just one of the things, I guess, just as a overall, is it is over, is over about twenty-five. And most of those are multi-part. And just from an administrative standpoint, certainly these are the board goals, so I will look at that to see what, what administration is able to accomplish. But, you know, I'm a little sensitive to, to last year. That I thought that last year was probably loaded up too much, and it was not a consensus of what actually was deliverable or the, the interpretation of what was deliverable is, was a little bit of a moving target, I guess, for me. What I thought was deliverable and what other people thought was deliverable were two different things. So I think that by reducing the number and, and having more of a focus, at least from an administrative standpoint, it says that the goals with the administrator by mutual agreement, that, you know, I will be looking to, to have more narrowed and, and specific goals for me to try to, for me to try to accomplish. But to have twenty-five multi, multi-section ones is, I think, is a.
And, and to that, Chris, you know, last year, I think, when we put the goals and objectives together, we were, we were operating without a town, assistant town administrator. And I imagine some of these are going to be done by, by your assistant. And second, some of these, which I can send you the number, are, most of the work was done this year, and that, and that they're, they're still moving. You know, the buildings.
Sure. No, I appreciate some of that.
So it, it really isn't twenty-five new goals and objectives. And if you look at the economic development, that's really our, our, the board's goal and objective. You have a very little role in that. So if you, if you'd all consider all of that and, and send me your thoughts, I will tweak as needed. So the next is the Action Item Register. This was brought up, I think, by, this was brought up by Peter at the March twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. And in the minutes, it says, "The board agreed to use an Action Item Register document for tracking purposes and to start after-town meeting." And again, Ms. Greenlaw agreed to keep, Charlene, our Assistant Town Administrator, agreed to keep the list. Chairman Hughes said it should be in the packet every week. So, you know, we voted this. I think it's, it's, it's a good idea for communication. It's a good idea for us to keep, keep a log. Charlene agreed to do it, to start this. Do we want to email in anything that we know is open? Or do we want to start it now? Peter?
I just made a comment. One is, I think at that time I developed a little spreadsheet that had some tracking item file, whatever, which is a good starting point, I think. But I just want to make sure that what I view as an action item that goes on there are things that are voted by this board or directed by this board, not me as an individual or anybody else as an individual saying, I want something. It's only action that this board as a group says, okay, we want green paint, I don't know, to paint the wall. Whatever it is. So we need to be, be careful with that. There was some discussion about whether, I think there was some discussion about whether the Assistant Town Administrator should keep that log or whether it should be the clerk of the board. I just think that's a lot of work. I don't know. You know, I, I certainly trust the Assistant Town Administrator. Only if anything's going to be hidden there. So I, I, I think it's a great thing to do just because I do think in the last couple of years, we sort of lost track of a few things and things ended up taking longer maybe than they should have. Or we thought progress was being made and it wasn't, that type of thing. And it doesn't need to be a lengthy report every week, but we just need to identify things that are either getting out of bounds, if you will, time-wise, maybe? Or if we have to adjust, you know, what we think is the end date of the schedule because something happened, some new information happened or that type of thing. And then we add things as we go forward, so. I just think it's a good tracking tool.
Angela?
Same comment or new comment?
Anything.
I just, I think that you're, it's a good idea, maybe they could do that form in an Excel document and just have certain dates and just make it much easier is one. Two, in looking through your, some of the goals, it, it's clear that Chris is involved with a lot of them. But if you look behind some of them, there's one that would only be the purview of three or four groups up here, then one down in the finance group, and one at the community center. So we can have more than just one or two goals, long as we're careful on, on who's.
Great.
Who's physically doing them and, and, and making sure that it works. And I, I think that's, that's important.
Any comments on the action item?
Yep. So it does say, Ms. Greenhout, that's how you say that, agreed to keep the list. But I haven't seen it at all. We haven't actually implemented this.
No, no, no.
So I think because we haven't done anything with it since March, we should start from scratch. You had asked the question, should we, when should we start it? Once we finalize the goals and objectives, I think, is when we should start that.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, I guess I'm a little bit confused because I, I thought that goals and objectives are, are goals and objectives and that we would, I, I've done a quarterly report. Once the month ends, I'll do another quarterly report on goals and objectives. I thought what the Action Item Register was intended to do is that if there was a request for, I don't know, I'm trying to think of an example, whatever, a copy of, a copy of the, of the streetlight, what the status of the streetlight is, that, that would be put onto that with a, some kind of timetable. And then we would have that as an action item that would be followed up. So to me, this was not a goals and objectives tally sheet. It was more for the, the small items. We do every Tuesday morning, we have a meeting and we try to follow up on the, on all the various requests. I guess one of the things that I saw in here, though, was that the, the satisfaction was to come from the selectmen. And I guess my, you know, the, whether it was complete or not is to, to be determined by the board. And, you know, what happens in the circumstance in which, let's take that as a streetlight. So here we have a streetlight. Administration follows up. We send you the policy. Here's the policy that says it's a moratorium. And if the board says, well, we want a streetlight up, until the board votes to waive its own moratorium, saying, we want you to go ahead and do it, then administration's completed what we need to complete. If the board doesn't take an action, then it's just unfair to, to have administration be held to a standard of, well, if one board member or two board members want something that the rest of the board doesn't vote, does that stay on the action item list and get, you know, demerits against us for not accomplishing it?
Chris, the, you're, you're a hundred percent accurate in what the intent of that was. It hadn't, didn't have to do with goals and objectives. And then this is going to be, if, if, if we do it the way we said, it'll be in the packet every Friday. And the conversation will happen, you know, you'll have it ticked off in the box. If a board member didn't think it was done, that would be their opportunity to say that they wanted more of an action, in, in, in my opinion. This is ongoing and looked at weekly. Peter?
And since you mentioned the streetlight, let's just say, streetlights on the action item register, right? And you come back with exactly what we just said. You can have the policy, and the board says, well, we don't want to do it. Right? Well, where the board says, we do want to do it, and you're not recommending we do it. Well, you've done your job. Now that action item becomes a responsibility to the board of selectmen somehow. So there's like a column that says, who's got the latest responsibility or whatever? And if it's our responsibility, then we take that responsibility, and then you don't have it. Until such times, we figure out, we need to give it back to you because we want some more information. So we'll just, I think it's an experiment.
Right.
You know, see how it goes.
Can I just ask, so didn't, so that was a decision to do back in March, to, to come up with that? So, and I don't know, but would it be worthwhile looking at what things were pending from March till now? So that we don't miss stuff that was maybe going to go on those action items? Rather than wait, like, to, to Janelle's point, if we start fresh and start now, but will we have missed a few things in the last few months that you all thought you wanted to address? I, I'm just asking.
I would say when that comes out and we get the first look at what the format is, and we see the first three things that show up there, we'll say, hey, wait a minute, how about this thing I've been asking to get?
My sense is if you have something, send it to Charlene.
Yeah, I was just going to make that same suggestion, that if there are things that, you know, people think that haven't been accomplished, then just we'll, we'll do like a, an initial list or something that the board will have to, will have to initially.
And the board can also decide whether it's still interested in it.
Right.
Sometimes things are old enough to.
Yeah, we'll take a, we'll take a look at it in the background.
Can I make a suggestion on the streetlight? I, I know why the, that, that moratorium was put in place. A lot of it is because people thought it would really damage being able to look at stars and astronomy news during the period when the telescope went in. But I think somebody made the comment about, we are taking a look at Brooks Park. And I would think it makes eminently good sense to put appropriate lighting into Brooks Park so people could walk rather than streetlights. So if that's the board's decision, maybe we should bring that up and ask somebody or the engineer to do it. That's a whole different thing than a streetlight, which is big and bright and.
My, my intent on that will be to put it on the next agenda.
Fine.
There's a whole history there that.
Yeah.
It's big, it's long history. You don't want to.
I got the email too, and it was a very, a fair request, so I'll put it on as an agenda item. Okay, any more comments on any of that? Great. So next is, is the, I just wanted to announce a couple important, a couple of retirements. Most of these people are going to retire before our next meeting. So, you know, I just wanted to, to congratulate them on their retirements and thank them for the service to the town. I'm sure that we'll all have an opportunity to again. The first would be David Spitz. We talked about him earlier. He's going to, his last day, I believe, is July eighth. So that'll be before our next, so thank David. John Eldridge from the DPW, he's a working foreman. He started in nineteen ninety-nine. He's got seventeen years of service to the town of Harwich, so a big thank you to John Eldridge. The third one on my list is my mother, Karen Young. She's the Secretary to the Police Chief. She's actually been the Secretary to five police chiefs now. And she's retiring July first, and that will be thirty years of service to the town of Harwich. And then one more that I just happened to get a glimpse of today was John Eyre, who works for the Harwich Fire Department, who just completed today his last shift of forty years' service to the town of Harwich. But, so a big thank you to John Eyre and, and his family for, for all his time in the town of Harwich. Okay, selectman's report. Anything, Peter?
A couple of things. One is, do we have any update or can we at least acknowledge some people? I think it's starting July first, which is Friday, the License Plate Reader System at the landfill. I think as people have gone to get their beach stickers and sign up for, you know, the, the disposal site, that they've been given information about that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I went down with Bill to kind of show, and I think we got a, a front page story on that to hopefully help to educate folks to that end.
It'd just be nice, I'm sure you give us an update on how it all works at some point in time. The other one is that, you know, we've been, we've been talking a lot in the last year or so about solar and whatnot, the solar at the landfill. And I just pulled up here, and I don't know if any of you are on this, but C-Vac, through a company called Draper, I think it is, you can have access to what's going on at the landfill right now, and, you know, what it's done for the year. So this, this site tells us that so far this year, we've generated almost three million kilowatt hours. And it actually shows you by the eight segments. So a concern I had, I think about two months ago, was whether or not one segment wasn't performing right because the numbers didn't look right. They all seem to be within ten percent of each other, so I guess it's, it's working pretty well. But I think we get these from Lizardgo, the passwords and whatnot. You could have credentials to get on. Just interesting. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Peter. Janelle?
I don't have anything this week.
Angela? Julie?
I've been participating with the Booster Club. The Monomoy Regional School District is trying to start a booster club. So I've been attending meetings for that, and I think it's a great initiative. You know, the individual sports will still have their ways to fundraise, but they're collectively trying to unite to attack bigger projects, like the concession stand that we're looking to kick off in the next few weeks, so that it'll be up and running hopefully by the fall sports, so.
If anyone wanted to be involved in that, who would they contact?
If anyone wants to be involved with that, they can contact Brendan Case. He's helping spearlead the, the booster club. And then there's, there's many people involved, but I think Brendan's probably the best contact.
And he's at Monomoy Regional.
Oh, sorry. He's the athletic director from Monomoy Regional High School. And they are looking for, for people to get involved in all different grade levels so that, you know, we have a strong base to grow off of. As everybody knows, their kids turn over, and we're looking for young, too old, so.
Thank you. Okay, we are adjourned.
Happy for the July.